Committee meeting of November 10th in Toole. And the first item on the agenda is audience sharing. Do we have any audience that wants to share?
I do have one, just to make note that Mr. Principal LaVoye is not with us this evening. He is in Washington DC. We have the eight greatest who left this afternoon, just in time, as they always do to celebrate Veterans Day in Washington DC. So he's looking forward to sharing an update on the trip at the next meeting, as well as the stone.
Yep.
That they recently...
But when do they come back?
Yes, they will be back. I think they're back Saturday.
Very good.
Actually, they're back Friday at 6:40 PM on the agenda.
Excellent.
On the agenda. So we wish them all a wonderful experience in Washington DC and look forward to the story.
Excellent experience for everyone. Always it.
They changed the time too, so they fly out at a more convenient time than they usually do, right?
They departed at 3:30 AM, wasn't it?
Yeah, really.
I just got the kids getting up in the middle of the night now.
Yeah.
Back in the old days.
And they had another night.
Definitely the short straw for driving the bus.
Okay, and so Christine, for new business?
Well, we were and still are looking very much forward to the presentation by the South Row Ed Foundation. We certainly appreciate their continued support of all the good work that's done in our schools and the fundraising they do to provide financial support for new and innovative practices within our districts. Unfortunately, there was an emergency. Everyone's fine, but they will not be here this evening. They send their regrets and are eagerly looking forward to December when, at the time of the year when we celebrate, we'll celebrate their presentation in December.
And the second item is the Finn and Woodward School Improvement Plan?
Principal Ryan and Assistant Principal Clayton. Principal Randall and Assistant Principal Clayton. Ryan will present the Finn Woodward School Improvement Plans. I believe it's the presentation of a new improvement plan for all schools.
It is.
And I know you've been very hard at work and you have an excellent plan and much exciting information to share about the good work that's taking place in your schools.
Great, thank you. Don't mind me moving over to this.
Absolutely not. Clearing the house.
Good evening. It's pleasure presents here this evening the new school improvement plan for Finn and Woodward Schools for the next two-year cycle, 2016 to 2018. Joining me tonight is Assistant Principal Clayton Ryan and Grade 3 teacher Allison Durant, who is also the co-chair of the school council. I believe you all have a copy of the plan. We'd like to begin by giving you a brief update of the accomplishments from our last plan. Of your call last spring, we provided you with a printed, more detailed account of the accomplishments. Instead of reviewing that with you again, this evening, I thought we would change it up a bit and provide you with a little bit more entertainment. So Mr. Ryan and Elizabeth Hall, our technology specialist at the Finn School, put together this video overview of those accomplished under our last plan and the priorities of academic excellence, high-performing workforce, safe and healthy environment, 21st century learners, global awareness. Again, this video just provides some highlights of the action steps that we had done during the last two years.
What? What? Did you hear what I said? The fifth duck is also the last duck. Please come.
That's a brief visual overview for you of things that I'm sure we've spoken about some of the great things that we've done over the last couple of years. And we look forward to sharing with you tonight some of the things that we continue to look forward to in the next couple of years. Our school council members are obviously an important, play an important role with our school in developing our plan. They comprise the representation of parents, staff in both schools, and a community member. We meet every month, and during our monthly meetings, we review our proposed budget for the school committee. We monitor our current school improvement plan and develop our new goals and strategies. We also have an open forum at each bar meeting, so that parents can bring forth topics of discussion. As an organization, we accomplish goals by having a clear vision of what we want to accomplish and set action steps to meet those goals. Last year, the district created a strategic plan, a strategic planning committee that developed Vision 2020. And that plan was for the North Row and South Row public schools. The district's strategic plan provides a direction for schools to develop their school improvement plans, which influence the work done in our classrooms, thus the direct impact of the development of educated goals. I point this out because it's important to see the direct alignment of the work being done in our district. This alignment provides clear direction from the classroom to the teachers, to the school, and to the district. When we have this kind of alignment, we are all working together on common goals. And when districts don't have the alignment, they really are working from an angle I refer to as random acts of improvement, which doesn't necessarily limit itself to the same positive results that we see in our district with this aligned system. So I just want to thank the district for providing this great direction for our schools. In our next plan, we have shifted our priorities to match that of the district's plan. So the strategic focus areas from the 2020 plan is communication, curriculum, student support, and technology. Tonight, we'll share with you five goals for the Finn and Woodward Schools that directly align themselves to these four focus, strategic focus areas. Our first goal is under communication. To foster ongoing opportunities to communicate with stakeholders, including students, staff, parents, and community members about all aspects of the school environment and to develop external relationships with the community at large. And the action steps that we will take in order to meet this goal. Number one is a parent survey. We'll conduct a survey of parents to determine the community education needs of the families from the Finn and Woodward Schools. The survey tool will actually be developed by the district, and this information will be shared and analyzed to recollect our strengths and the needs of the family. This is especially important because, as you know, over the last few years, modes of communication have really shifted. Secondly, we will develop, refine, and publish model curriculum maps. As you know, the staff have been working on the development of curriculum maps for the past few years using the Atlas software program. We're in the final stages of development, and we will have maps that could be published for parents. Three, beginning this spring, I'll facilitate an MCAS information meeting for parents, of third-grade parents. This will be an introduction to one-on-one of MCAS into a part, depending on what Department of Education chooses for its assessment. Since third-grade students are their first, that's their first year that they are introduced to this state assessment journey, it'll be a great opportunity to share with parents what they can expect around them. And then the fourth action step is to increase communication on our current practices for parents, especially things that support our school culture, such as our social curriculum programs, zones regulation, and care programs. You'll notice there's four corners to this slide, and looking at these, these are the current modes of communication that we use to get information out to parents. We have a very detailed monthly newsletter that goes out to parents each month called Chalk Talk. I brought a sample to share with you for November. You have it with you. Included in the newsletter are highlights of important dates, a message from the principal, curriculum, highlights from each of the grade levels, pre-K to grade three, as well as information from the specialists. We also send out a weekly one-call. This is our electronic backpack. An email goes out to each parent with all information about events, school notices, etc., that have taken place in our schools. Each year, we hold several principal coffees. Parents are invited to join us and discuss important topics. It includes a presentation on specific focus areas, for example, literacy, school safety, or technology. And then finally, parent orientations. Each year, we hold a meeting for incoming, giving our parents at the Finn School and incoming second-grade parents at the Woodward School. These orientations provide parents with an opportunity to learn about each of the schools as their children's transition to those new schools. Now I'll pass it over to Allison Durant.
Under the strategic focus area of curriculum, our second goal is to align curriculum with state standards while providing a comprehensive curriculum that meets the needs of all learners. You will see that we have designed our plan around three cycles of curriculum development. Elementary teachers are responsible for teaching all academic subjects. By second-grade curriculum, we don't overwhelm staff by making too many changes at once. However, we are always monitoring all areas of the curriculum. In stage one, reflection and planning, we'll be focusing on math. As you know, we have adopted a new resource for our math curriculum in grades 8 to 3 called Envision Math. This program includes an online component called SuccessNet, which allows teachers to easily alter student worksheets and tests. There's also the ability to create online tests and track data within the program. For students and parents, SuccessNet gives them access to math lesson videos, as well as extra practice games and activities. Teachers in K-3 have a student learning goal as part of their evaluation. The goal focuses on reviewing the strengths and gaps in student math performance. Lastly, in math, the pre-K teachers will be looking for a math program that aligns with the Envision Math program. Our curriculum focus for stage two, which is making recommendations, is to develop a new science curriculum for students in pre-K and 3. Massachusetts has not officially adopted the new standards yet. We believe the state will adopt these new standards in the very near future, so we're preparing over the next two years to develop a new curriculum. As part of designing a new curriculum, we have a great opportunity to incorporate STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics activities into our units. For example, a new third-grade unit is on magnetism, force, and motion. Our students were given the task of designing a boat that would cross a small pool of water using magnetic force. We had recyclable materials such as water bottles, tissue boxes, and paper towel tubes for sale and gave each team $15 to spend. After selecting items, the kids created boats that would float and use the magnets to repel the boats from one side of the pool and attract to the other side. This was a fun project to end in a very hands-on unit. Our focus for writing will be in stage three, training and implementation. The staff at Finn and Woodward will continue to have training on the new Lucy Cawkins Writing Program. Part of this training is to have lab teachers that will work to become leaders and will model lessons for other teachers and provide resources and support. Our next goal is also on curriculum. This priority is where we focus our goals to promote professional development opportunities that reflect the district's initiatives. We have several professional development opportunities for teachers and staff. The first is through grade-level specific workshops with Dr. Ildeking that will focus on best practices in reading instruction and assessment. The second is, as I mentioned before, on the Lucy Cawkins Writing Program. These workshops are with a consulting team from the Teaching and Learning Alliance. Another exciting professional development initiative is to explore STEM resources, such as WPI and the Boston Museum of Science. As Mr. Randall mentioned earlier, we are in the final phase for implementation of our curriculum maps. Lastly, we are working with our instructional aides to train them to better support our students and close gaps in learning. Under collaboration, kindergarten and preschool teachers, along with Mr. Randall, will explore the feasibility of maintaining our NAEYC or National Association for the Education of Young Children accreditation. All teachers, as part of our student learning goal, will be analyzing math assessments, mapping possible combinations and modifications, including ways we can extend the curriculum. We'll also be reviewing new report cards to assure alignment of standards, especially in writing and science, where we have new programs and standards. And now I will pass it over to Clay and Ryan.
Thanks, Allison. I'd like to talk about now, our goals four and five for our school improvement plan. Goal four, the overarching influence of this goal. Goal four is again the district's strategic plan, Vision 2020, with an area of focus being student support services. And our goal is to continue to build and support a dynamic learning environment for all of our students. Some of the action steps that we'll be taking to meet this goal, we'll be promoting a healthy lifestyle with emphasis on good nutrition, physical activity, and recycling. How we'll be accomplishing this is through activities like our existing Walk to School program. Your students at both schools walk to school with family and community members. Our Wake Up and Workout program at Woodward, that's run by our gym teacher, our Woodward gym teacher Tiffany Good and Woodward school nurse Mary Ellen Duggan. We're also looking forward to establishing a Green Team, which will be comprised of staff and students who promote the importance of recycling within our schools. Additionally, we'll be discussing and documenting our current RTI, its response to intervention, and PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Strategies of Practices. And we'll explore the expansion of our established supportive strategies to meet the individual student needs for tiers one, two, and three of RTI support. And in PBIS, pre-K to 3, we're working on the development and integration of a school-wide behavioral expectations matrix. A little bit about RTI, RTI's response to intervention. It's a multi-tiered approach to early identification and support of students with learning and behavioral needs. The three tiers start with interventions for all students at the bottom, and then move up to more specifically targeted supports. And PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Intervention Strategies, is basically just a term to describe all the positive behavioral interventions and supports our schools use to support our students' social and emotional functioning. And finally, we've developed and put into place pre-K to 3 PLCs, which are professional learning communities. And those are to address student needs in the following areas: reading, writing, math, science, social studies, RTI, PBIS, and technology. And through our PLCs, we're promoting cross-curricular collaboration and the continued professionalism that our staff members bring to our meetings. And finally, goal five, the overarching influence of this goal. Goal five is again tied directly to the district's strategic plan, Vision 2020, with an area of focus being technology. Goal five, 21st century learners, is to effectively expand the use of technology to meet the needs of all of our learners. Some of the action steps we'll be taking to meet this goal, we'll be defining what 21st century skills are. Skills such as critical thinking, problem-solving, communication, collaboration, creativity, innovation, global awareness, and media. And we'll be identifying the best practices for teaching and digital learning for our students pre-K to 3. We're referring to the district's document that defines teaching and digital learning expectations with student measures of identifying skills. We're also going to maximize communication and productivity through Google applications, such as Google Docs, Google Slides, Google Sheets, and Google Draw for staff training. Our staff is currently in their second year of the Educator Evaluation Professional Practice Goal, which supports Google involvement. Staff has switched a great deal of our documents over into the Google Drive system. This allows greater collaboration and access for all of our staff. We're also using our Tech Mondays, which is basically just a staff meeting once a month, to increase our professional development skills in this area. We're also going to provide ongoing professional development for our staff through a variety of venues, including online and blended workshops. An example of this is our staff fully implementing technology in our classrooms and our students' lab experiences with the iPads. Additionally, the district is moving forward towards providing more online learning opportunities for all staff. And finally, through the formation of the Technology PLC, or Professional Learning Community, with cross-curricular representation pre-K to 3, to meet regularly to discuss district initiatives and support-based needs regarding software, hardware, professional development, and digital learning. And that concludes our school improvement plan presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
I was gonna have one comment. Just a few years back, we did the strategic plan, and it's wonderful to see how all of that hard work has kind of come together. And we see it whenever we see a school improvement plan. And I know how hard you all were working to try to stay to that line. You know, I guess that's the main thing that I see here, is that we're actually implementing what we determined was important a few years back.
I just wanted to applaud your efforts. This is a very innovative approach to presenting the plan. I don't think I've seen a video yet, so I think that was IMAX or something. But one of the things that is true about the strategic plan, and when it was developed, this was really a purposeful focus for the committee, was to incorporate the focus areas so that they were flexible and adaptable to every school. And as we look at the strategic plan and how it's being implemented in each school, we can see that, I think, we accomplished that goal. Because even though the four focus areas are the same, the way that they've been embraced and the kinds of programmatic changes that they've made or the kinds of goals they have set within each building are very much different. Because the culture and where every school is in the process is very different. So I think that one of the features and one of the benefits that we hoped would be realized is that it does provide that tremendous flexibility while still keeping the district aligned in the overarching vision for our schools as we march towards 2020.
So I will say that we just came back from our Massachusetts Association of School Committee conference, and we heard a lot about early education and about, and I think that everything you hear, you know, you sort of hear it probably about seven years, you know, like at these kind of forums, before anything really, you know, functionally starts to impact districts like ours. But it just sounds like all of the changes that are coming and all of the, all the politics associated with education seem to be concentrated in the early, the preschool and the K and the early years. So, you know, seeing a plan like this and seeing all the programs that you guys have in place and everything that you're doing, just makes me feel very confident that whatever comes rolling down from up, you know, lots of hills, we seem like we are very well-positioned to react to them, to absorb them, to, in some cases, I think we're doing it before, you know, we're like a model for what it is that they're looking for. So that is very, very, very good to see. And the other thing that I'm very glad that I saw is the, not to open a can of worms, but the reevaluation of the feasibility of the NAEYC. Because that, when, how long ago did we do it? Seven years or something like that? Was it longer than that? We, I mean, the exercise that we went through, that you went through, we didn't rank them. That you went through. And, you know, I know that when Mary Ryan brought in all of the binders and, you know, the folders and the immense amount of work, I think it was a great exercise. I think we, you know, we definitely proved that we are, you know, probably one of the most outstanding, outstanding K-3 programs in the state. But it seems to me to be a lot of bureaucratic documentation that I think we know we're good. I think we know where we need to improve. I think we know what's coming down. You know, like you guys are positioned great in a great space, and I don't see why we need to spend a lot of effort on and money. We have to see this.
Because people's time.
And it's getting more and more expensive, almost doubling in expense. And the time and money, when there were so many other initiatives going on.
Just to have somebody sort of verify while we already know.
Right, a little bit.
I'm glad to hear you feel that way. And right now, it is part of an obligation with our kindergarten grant.
Sure.
But as we know, that comes and probably goes.
Right, exactly. So it's good to understand the feasibility of it. So I applaud you. Did I steal your thunder?
No, I'm just agreeing. I agree. Like Kathleen said, we did, there was, kept going through the agenda. There's a lot of focus on the early childhood education, so, which is good. I hope, you know, we don't have that big money to come without.
Of course.
But that will be, there will not be.
It's one of the things you can be assured of.
Great ideas. But no, I, like, I did go to the conference also, and, you know, it's great. I think we're already in a really good spot. And it's great to see us pointed in the direction we need to be. I do wonder, I always, you know, the whole science curriculum, so they still haven't, you know?
Haven't officially adopted it yet.
Any, kind of like Puck and MCAS, maybe they'll get to it someday, or, but is it expected to be? I mean, we can change, can, so we can't change our curriculum until it's officially been accepted because we have to stick with what the current Massachusetts framework is.
We can begin to make a shift, but we just have to be careful because we want to make sure, again, because of what the assessment's going to be, we want to make sure that we're teaching, you know, the standards that they're going to be assessed on. So it's not as critical at the general levels because they don't have the
So it's not as critical at the general levels because they don't have the state test, and once you hit third grade enough.
How different is it from a science perspective in K3 than what we're doing?
We happen to have a sign in the chair. Right here.
It's pretty big changes, actually. So, under the current frameworks, we have K to two standards and three to five standards. So we decided how to divvy up those science units. And the two frameworks, as we hope they're going to be adopted, will say, this is the kindergarten curriculum, this is the first grade curriculum, this is the second grade curriculum. And they even include clarification statements, so it tells us where to stop. So, you know, we don't step on another grade's toes when we're, or get too involved in the unit. And if, these units will start to build, as opposed to the frameworks that we're currently using, where they kind of teach magnets in this grade, and then they may not see it again until another later grade. These are more built-in every single year.
So it sounds like it's, it is actually worthwhile, worth the effort.
The draft looks great.
Okay.
What's great is our teachers have really been very innovative in looking at, as Allison mentioned, STEM, that's kind of our whole business, really how we create those integrated units of study. So that was one example, third grade. And I have to tell you, kids loved it, you know, they were seeing that bow go, and, you know, it's like a wave, takes it to a certain point, and it picks up and back out, and it goes. And there's a lot of science and math and the money that comes into it, so it really was a, there are a lot of great activities that went on to those kind of.
Well, and those are both areas that obviously there's an overall push for. And they're also something that, you know, a lot of it stems from your feelings about it, or if you've had accomplishments, or you've had disappointments at an early grade. So I feel like at those early grades, if we can get that enthusiasm, the "I'm good at it" also, both enthusiasm, feeling good about how, how you do in that, and, and an excitement about learning in those kind of subjects, then, then it just sort of, you know, takes it up the chain to each level. But I think, I think more so than anything, the "I'm not good at math" can start really early with kids, and I think it's hard to break. So, you know, just having seen kids, you know, that I don't know where that comes from so early on, "I can't do math," or "I'm not good at science." So I think anything we can do to sort of propel the kids, I just want to help them.
I would just like to add a positive comment about the length of time it's taken for the science standards to be released. There were several sort of false starts. And about two years ago, maybe even a week, in the middle of a winter snowstorm, many of us traveled to Burlington for the release of the standards. And at that time, the discussion was that we were going to holistically adopt the National Science Foundation standards. And Massachusetts said, no wait, we want to take our time and add to it and really dig deeply into these standards to make sure that they weren't elements of what Massachusetts as a state felt should be taught at certain grade levels. So this is the good news for those who are concerned about curriculum that might come from here or there. This is really an embedded process within Massachusetts. And so the frameworks will not be National Science Foundation frameworks, they'll be Massachusetts Science frameworks. So I think that speaks very highly about how Massachusetts is embracing the sciences and providing that additional thoughtful time to create standards that, as Allison said, makes sense at all grade levels.
I think that's sort of an indication of sort of the education system in Massachusetts that there might be overall standards, but we always look at that and say, yes, those are innocent, almost minimum standards we need to meet, you know, we know we need to cover. But if we want to add to those and improve them, we certainly can. And so that's a total example of that. Yeah, we'll make sure we cover all that, but we, we're not giving up anything that we've taught or not afraid to add stuff, you know. And even at school district level, we can do that if we can add more.
Yeah, I have one question there. We were talking about Envision Math and how you had, maybe this, maybe I got that mixed with something else, but how you have some lessons that the children can take home? Or they do, now, is that technology-based, how exactly is that done?
Success Net.
Yeah, Success Net.
So, so there's opportunities for kids who are absent?
Yeah.
Or who are missing lessons, that they can go watch this lesson, we give them a little video clip, it kind of sets the stage during the first whole class introduction of the topic.
Yeah.
And so students can access that. And so when they go to do their math work and their math sheets and different things, it's all right there. So if students are going to spend a period of time, they can essentially keep up with the class.
So it's always, it's really the lessons in a, in a, in a technology format. Now, if the children, if they need, do they have to, do you find that they have the technology available at home in all cases to do this, or what are you seeing? What if, for example, a child was, did have absences, and if they didn't have a way to get to the information at home, how would we handle that?
That's a good question, having had that issue.
Then it's not, then it's not an issue?
It hasn't been an issue.
Okay. So it is not an issue then? Okay. Because that's something that I was just, I was just wondering about. So, so basically, though, we do have some programs in place now where we have video or maybe interactive video where students can learn away from the classroom.
That's right.
And have we had this in the past, or is this a bug?
Not with our math, no. Not at elementary.
Yeah, I just think it's wonderful. I think it's innovative and it's the direction of the future. It's certainly going to be very helpful to, for a lot of students.
And the video really is kind of a motivator to the lesson and an introduction to the major topic of the lesson. It isn't the entire lesson. So I don't want to misrepresent that, you know, kids being taught by video. But it certainly is, it's enticing for them, it sets the playing field for all classrooms, and it has an essential message that then the teacher picks up and carries her lesson into a strong report.
Yes. Are we seeing any, are we seeing results specifically from this that are showing these positive results that you could specifically?
We'll get to that in the next section. We'll get to that. Actually, our MCAS third grade scores were phenomenal. Ninety-three percent of our students scored proficient or above, with an exceptionally high number of percent of students in the ABN stretch. So yes, I think we're seeing results.
Okay. And you feel, though, and we'll get to that more later, you think that a lot of that is the result of our new innovative, of some of the innovative programs that we put in place to have children achieve better math?
I think it's because we have great teachers.
Yes.
We've had some wonderful professional development over the last couple of years.
Yes.
So we've all aligned ourselves to the standards that are being taught and with the resources that we have available. So with the addition of the Envision Math program as our resource for all teachers, and the technology that we have available to us to support it both in school and at home. And our, you know, students are like a chain, so we link from one grade to the next grade. And our students in math are very well-linked because all of our grades have the Envision Math program. So it's very much a spiraling curriculum that supports from one grade to the next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
And the next fellow on the agenda is MCAS presentations.
I think Rachel will be going to host some presentations and provide some additional information on our math, ELA, and state science. I'd just like to preface before we begin MCAS, that as we say each and every year, this is really just a snapshot of time in terms of student performance, but it provides certainly a lot of meaningful data for us to assess our curriculum alignment and our instruction practices as well. I was, I noted that when Mr. Randall presented his pyramid of goals, and particularly in the area of curriculum, he did have a bullet that mentioned the formative assessment and subjective assessment they used with Envision. And I think that's important to note, that while MCAS may be the state assessment, we assess our students' performance in many and varied ways each and every day in the classroom. So all of that informs our practices and helps students achieve their personal best. It's important to note, and it was great to see that in the slide.
So thanks. Great question. Please share the spring 2015 MCAS results with the school committee. I think following a school improvement plan is perfect because the real work really happens in classrooms with teaching and learning. And one way we measure how well our curriculum is working and how students are performing is through MCAS. And it's one of the many metrics that we use to determine how effective we are as a bulk school district. And the story continues to be a very positive story for South Road. I do want to point out a few key points before diving into the data. As Mr. Randall mentioned, the landscape across the Commonwealth for the past five, seven years has been changing. There have been a number of curriculum changes. In 2011, the Department of Education adopted new ELA and math frameworks. In 2013, they initiated retail, rethinking equity teaching English language learners. In 2014, they adopted MPEA. They released the draft, formed the Next Generation Science Standards. And what we can expect in the future is that adoption of those standards, as well as a decision by the Board of Education to either continue with MCAS or switch directions into Park, or potentially a third option, MCAS 2.0. So this is important because through all these changes, South Road's performance has improved year after year, which speaks to the high-quality teachers and the ability to adapt to these changes. These changes are new to the Commonwealth. With head reform in 1993, Massachusetts was one of the leaders in the country around adopting state standards. And as you can see from English Language Arts, there have been a number of changes over the years from 2001 to 2004 through 2011. And similar in math, and we're anticipating the adoption of the science standards next year. You can see there are standards in all content areas, although ELA, math, and science are the areas that are assessed with MCAS. As a district, we have a distributed leadership model. We have K through 12 curriculum leaders who really drive the work in terms of curriculum development. They're the experts, they're the folks who are in working with students. And the nice thing is we get to leverage the resources that we have here in South Road and North Road and at the regional high school, and work as one community of learners, and it really benefits the students. This curriculum team really looks at, you know, alignment of curriculum, you know, what are students expected to know, be able to do, and at each grade level, and looking at that progression of, a continuum of experiences for students. And then what learning experiences do students need to be provided in order to meet the expectations? So we have a very talented, dedicated curriculum team who does an outstanding job on behalf of the leadership. Just to speak briefly to some of the shifts that we're seeing, and we've seen over the past several years in mathematics, with adoption of the 2011 frameworks, we've really seen a much more focused and coherent progression of mathematical understanding, K through 12. There's then more of an emphasis on procedural fluency and application of mathematical understanding. So really looking at kicking students' basic skills, the procedural fluency, and making sure that students can apply their skills and procedural fluency in real-world applications. And lastly, we've really seen an increasing rigor of what's expected of students, and our students have really risen to the occasion, have demonstrated that they can meet those high standards. In English Language Arts, we've really seen a kind of a balancing of literature and informational texts. If you think about the type of texts you read on a day-to-day basis, it's primarily informational texts. So there's much more of a focused and balanced approach to literacy. In addition, in writing, we're seeing much more of a balanced approach with MCAS 1.0. The focus of writing was primarily on narrative writing, to the detriment of all the other types of genre writing that we support those students. So now students have experience with persuasive writing, research, explanatory writing, so it's more important. In addition, we're seeing, in addition to reading and writing, speaking and listening are now part of that language development, K through 12. And lastly, this is not a new idea, but it is a new focus for the curriculum frameworks, that's really looking at other content areas, embedding those content areas, literacy in all content areas, addition to science subjects. So that during the literacy instruction, it's not just ELA teachers, it's also the science teachers and math teachers. We all have a role in helping students develop, developing their literacy skills. And lastly, all of these changes are anchored in college and career readiness, so making sure that our, our high school graduates are ready for college or a career, and they have the necessary skills to succeed in either of those endeavors. So the looming question that we're all facing really is the next-generation assessments. And it's not whether there will or not, whether there will be a next generation, generation assessment or not, that's a matter of when and what that will look like. There's a lot of discussion around, will it continue to be MCAS? Will it be Park? Or will there be a third option? Regardless of what it is, the rigor and expectations of students will be increased, and the type of assessments that students experience will be much more rigorous. And really, in terms of higher-order thinking, students will be asked to apply, analyze, and evaluate at a much higher level than they have been in the past. So the vote is scheduled for November 17th, that's, that's the information that we have currently, and we're, it was shared to us that as soon as the Department of Education knows, they will let districts know when we can begin any preparation that is required of us. So now we're going to get into accountability, and how, as a district, we're measured in terms of MCAS. And there are two really accountability measures. One is student growth percentile, and it's on a scale of 1 to 99, and we're compared to similar schools across the state. Typical growth of percentiles are between 40 and 60. Above 60 is considered high growth, below 40 is considered low growth, and many of the districts are between that 40 and 60. The second accountability measure that we look at is achievement levels, and that's scaled scores. And the four areas are advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and learning. And that gives us the indication of how students are performing individually, how a school is performing, and how the district is performing. And we marry those two measurements, SGP and achievement, to really look at the overall performance of the district in regards to MCAS. So I'm going to talk a little bit about aggregate growth as one of the measures. As you can see, along the x-axis on the bottom is SGP, student growth percentile, and you have zero to 100. On the y-axis, you have percent proficient or higher. In South Road, our student growth percentile is 52, and our student achievement was at 82% of students scoring proficient or higher across the district. And if you look at that chart, it's divided into four quadrants. The goal is always to have high achievement and high growth, to be in that upper right-hand quadrant. In the state, SGP was 50, and you'll notice achievement was much lower than South Road's. And in terms of where the South Road district performed compared to other districts across the Commonwealth, this just can be kind of a sample of what it looks like. So that was mathematics, MCAS, aggregate growth. And this is ELA, so the SGP for South Road was 57. So we were right at that cusp of having really high growth. And we had 88% of our students who scored percent proficient or higher. And again, we were in that high growth, high of achievement quadrant. So again, this is exactly where we want to be in terms of student growth percentiles and achievement. And again, in comparison to schools across the Commonwealth, South Road continues to perform very well. The next chart that you're looking at really is cohort analysis. So it's tracking a group of students across their experience in public schools of North Road, South Road, from third grade to 10th grade. You'll notice that the 2016 cohort, all the way to 2025 cohort, we noticed that 2016 cohort, the third graders, 63% scored proficient or advanced, compared to the 2025 cohort, where 93% scored proficient or advanced. So we're seeing some really positive trends in terms of how students are performing over time. And what we're seeing is as students take And what we're seeing is, as students take the M-CAS assessment in tenth grade, students are scoring at a very high level. In two thousand and sixteen, ninety-five percent of the students scored proficient or advanced. Two thousand and seventeen, it was ninety-three percent. Two thousand and eighteen, it was ninety-four percent. And I will point out that the curriculum frameworks are really the floor, not the ceiling. And that our high school really goes beyond expectations that are outlined in the curriculum frameworks. And you can see the trend line, it's trending in a positive manner for cohorts. This is the trend for progression of achievement for ELA. And we're seeing similar positive trends in terms of student performance over time, where in two thousand and sixteen, ninety-nine percent of high school students who scored M-CAS scored proficient or advanced. And again, the class of two thousand and eighteen was also at ninety-nine percent. So over time, students are making growth and improving achievement, which is exactly what we want to see in terms of, is our curriculum working? So this is another chart, another lens of looking at the data. And this is progression of M-CAS achievement math, but this is looking at comparing years. So looking at comparing the third-grade M-CAS administration in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, and so on. So if we look at two thousand and eleven, we had twenty-nine percent of students who scored advanced. Compared to two thousand and fifteen, we had forty-nine percent of our students scoring advanced category. So what this information tells us is that our curriculum is working, it is having an impact on student performance, and that we're heading in the right direction in terms of overall achievement. In ELA, we're seeing similar trends. In two thousand and eleven, we had fifteen percent of our students scoring advanced. And in two thousand and fifteen, we had thirty percent of the students scoring advanced. So again, the trend line is positive in terms of decreasing the number of students who are proficient and moving those kids to advanced. So we're seeing a lot of nice growth. So the next steps, the action steps. So we have a tremendous amount of data on each student, and for each teacher, and for each school. And we really look at this data very closely. And teachers spend a lot of time looking at the data in terms of how those students performed last year. But they're also using the data to look at the students who are sitting in front of them, and using that data to identify strengths and areas for growth, and using that to inform their instruction. And we're also able to disaggregate the data by subgroups. So we can look at performance in terms of males and females, and just all different types of subgroups we can look at. And we're really using that information to identify areas of improvement, looking at individual student results. And most importantly, using the data to inform teaching and learning. Although M-CAS is a very public measure, it's just one of the many measures that we use to determine whether student serving is successful. And we always triangulate the M-CAS data with other local assessments, report card data, teacher observations, and so forth. We're going to continue to align curriculum assessments. We talked briefly about next-generation science assessments. The next-generation science curriculum, we're going to increase the rigor of our local assessments, really making sure that students have experience with application, analysis, and evaluation. And we're very keenly aware of the changing state landscape in terms of this assessment, and making sure that we're prepared for any changes that are taking place. And again, the vote is on November seventeenth, so that will provide us with some good information about what correction needs to be made. And lastly, what grounds the work for our district is really Division Twenty Twenty. That sets the foundation for the work that happens in our schools. And really, the work that we invest in, or the work that happens, is really invested in our teachers, that we spend a lot of money and time making sure that teachers have the skills, knowledge, and content to be excellent classroom teachers. And that we also make sure that they have the most appropriate resources to do the job well. We'll continue to focus on professional development, strategic growth areas, rewriting mathematics and science. We'll continue to use data to inform instruction and align curriculum standards, specifically the science standards, and training and access in retail, which is again, part of that shifting landscape. So overall, we've seen a lot of positive data trends over the past several years. All of the data that we saw to you, look at tonight, is from two thousand and eleven, which is the beginning of many of the curriculum shifts that have taken place. And all the data supports that our curriculum is working, that we have highly effective teachers in the classroom, and that we have a lot of good teachers. And we have two M-CAS presentations that we would like to invite parents to. The first is at the Neri Elementary School on eleven twelve. And Principal Valente will be taking a deeper dive into the Neri data. And then on the sixteenth of November, Mr. Lloyd, Principal Lloyd, will be taking a deep dive into the Tronior data. And parents are welcome to attend those sessions. So thank you, and we have your answer.
I reviewed the numbers too, when they first came up, so I just spent a little time with them. I would have to say that we were always good, and we definitely have shown quite a bit of improvement. And I think that you've done a good job showing it in a number of graphs. And I think that the system should be very proud of the job that they've accomplished. I do think, I know, we know that we have a great administration, and we have excellent teachers. But the improvement over the last few years, my gut feeling is it's been programs that you've put in place. It's been, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's around professional development. And some of these other programs that you've put in place to improve achievement, improve achievement. Am I correct in that? Could you talk a little bit to that? Because I know we have great teachers and stuff, but something has changed, something has changed the dynamics.
Well, I think that the investment in professional learning that has taken place, Superintendent Johnson's work as Assistant Superintendent, have paid evidence in terms of building consistency in teacher understanding and pedagogy and content, and allowing our teachers to really excel. And then, as you mentioned, providing teachers with the correct resources to be able to teach. So the vision, you know, resource set is a pretty rigorous resource set that gives teachers the tools to do their job well. And it's aligned, and it really provides rigor and coherency as students progress through the system. And I think, lastly, it's the strategic plan, it's really that foundation, that common focus that we as public schools of North Grove, South Grove have that kind of guide for. So I think those three factors have really, really made a big difference.
So if I'm, am I correct in saying this? This is just one, what I kind of perceive, what I see from this is that people are always afraid of teaching to the test. And that's something that you always get concerned about with M-CAS or any standardized test. And that was something that we discussed over the years. I think that what we found is that we can see improvements in standardized testing, not by teaching to the test, but by trying to improve the entire system that goes around education. So the results that we're seeing, the improvement of results that we're seeing, is really a result of working the entire system and improving it, not a result of teaching to the test, or trying to just go into the teaching and say, you must do better in M-CAS. Am I correct?
Absolutely. And now we use fourth grade as an example. Fourth grade students experienced a long composition. So the major focus of writing instruction in the fourth grade for many, many years was narrative writing, to the detriment of other genre. So this is a shift to a more balanced approach. But our teachers still taught narrative writing, but also the other types of writing. So we didn't forget the things that were important to us as a district in terms of what students need to know to be able to do.
Yeah, so to carry it to my final statement, Aritho. So really, in some ways, it doesn't matter whether we have M-CAS, M-CAS two, or POC, that we've got, we have built the right system around education, okay? And no matter which, whatever we end up with, okay? We're still going to do as well as we could possibly do, because we built the system around it. I'm done.
I would add, there are two other, and I agree completely with Assistant Superintendent Magno. I think that collaboration, building capacity, and building leaders in our schools to be able to seize opportunities to engage in active conversations about what's taking place in the classroom. Our curriculum leader framework that was started twelve, four years ago, twelve feels like twelve, four years ago. And just having those continual conversations that are centered around a framework that makes sense for our schools. Making sure that we're all aligned in terms of our instructional practices and our curriculum, making sure that we have the resources to support the instruction that's taking, the excellent instruction that's taking place in the classroom. But really, I think that continuity of conversation that takes place amongst the teachers at the same grade level vertically and horizontally has been tremendous. And with any shift, you realize gains in three, four years, and I think that's what we're seeing. We had a significant investment, and I applaud all of our teachers who have taken on roles, leadership roles, whether it's a curriculum, or atlas, or technology. We've empowered them and given them an opportunity to explore, to be innovative, and to really embrace the challenge, and they have. Our principals are instructional leaders, they're just not managers of buildings. They are really leading what the instruction that's going on in the building. And then the folks that we have at Central Office really provide the framework for that. So it's never just one, it's a multifaceted approach to improvement, and I think that's what you see. It's a comprehensive educational experience, and it's a comprehensive approach to improvement.
I know that we talked about this many, many years ago, but remind me again, why is there, because I think it's also true with the state numbers, why is there such a dip from third to fourth grade?
So it's a slowdown, as well, Dr. Jett. What's interesting is they released the POC assessment data for those districts who took POC recently. And what they saw was that out of all the grades assessed in POC, the fourth graders did the best.
Assessing something different.
So, which is very interesting. So I think partly because it's a different type of assessment. We have that long composition, which is weighted far greater. It's a very different type of, I think a more rigorous assessment in fourth grade. So students, again, as you know, have to go from pre-riding to final draft in a matter of a few hours. And we see that that tends to be a more challenging assessment. I don't think it has anything to do with whether the students in the fourth grade are not meeting expectations. I think it's a different type of assessment. But it was interesting to see the POC data, because that's informing.
One of the things that's different is the way that students take the test. So third graders provide the answers right in the test booklet, while fourth graders have to transfer onto an answer machine.
Yes, I knew there was.
So it's very easy for a student to go to the wrong number bubble, and then it's going to be off a bit. So that's a test-taking skill that our young students are still learning.
There's also short answer in grade three, where we have open response. It definitely takes more stamina to take this assessment. There are some shifts, that organizational piece to it.
No worries, it's been a long time ago, but I remember my kids taking through that long composition, and they don't like it.
Another question is, so we saw, and I applaud you for all the, you know, great work that's been done in the advanced and proficient. But one of the things that looked like it was staying pretty constant, whether you're looking at cohorts or whether you're looking at years, is the warning category. And I know it's really small, but it seems to be consistent. Do we have a good feeling for like, you know, what is happening with those? I mean, it's a small number of kids. What is happening with those kids, and how from year to year, we don't seem to be able to move that number?
So I think, you know, one of the things we do is the eye analysis, and really looking at all students, you know, students who are in that warning category. And as Mr. Randall pointed out in his presentation, you know, we are implementing a response intervention. So making sure that we have a clear, well-articulated plan in terms of how to move students from that warning to this improvement to proficient. And that it's not about just teaching the same thing more often. It's about really looking at strategic interventions that we know are research-based and help students move in the right direction. And that's a lot of the work that we're looking at now.
Okay.
Looking at how we provide students who are struggling academically with interventions to get them to that max level. I'm sure.
I was going to say, I think we also really are very slow to move students to an M-CAS alternative assessment, because it just has a different impact down the road. So I think that, you know, we work really hard to provide all the accommodations we can for students so that they take the M-CAS exam while they're still. That's important to point out, because it does have a somewhat of an impact down the road.
Right, and that's always been just, that's always been our strategy from the district to try to keep kids in the regular system as long as possible.
It really is a very small number when you look at that number.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it's very small compared to the state's scores.
Right.
Oh, yeah. But then you did see some of the, you know, when you gave us all the bubbles, and you did see quite a number of districts that a hundred percent of the kids are scoring advanced or proficient. And I'm like, how is that even possible?
Because you pulled those kids out of the worst.
So you look at the population size.
Yeah.
So many of those, the population of those schools are very small.
Very small, yeah. You have a small population, and you've pulled a lot of the more at-risk kids out of the pool of M-CAS.
That's one of these, my last question, which is, at the conference, we heard a lot about poverty and students in poverty, and the correlation between poverty and test scores, not just M-CAS, but like all of them, all assessments. And I know that you guys are just bombarded with all this data once you, once the M-CAS scores come out. Is there any, like, correlating data, like, do they give you any correlating data of the, you know, wealth and poverty of, not just our district, but like all districts, and how kids score?
So we can see, we can look at achievement gaps in the different subgroups. So economically disadvantaged as a subgroup, and we can look at how the students who are economically disadvantaged in South Grove are performing compared to the aggregate population. And that's great information, because then we can dig deeper and ask further questions. And we also can look at the achievement gap at the state level as well, and see where we, where our students are performing compared to that level. So it's something that we really will get.
Are we conforming to that theory that the poverty?
Yes, there is an achievement gap in terms of, you know, economically disadvantaged compared to the aggregate population. And it's something we look at. And it's, again, it's a small number, and it really is coming up with individual classes to support those students in the rate of risk. Really, the analysis that helps us improve is really that subgroup analysis, really looking at gender differences, looking at male female performance, looking at economically disadvantaged. There's a lot of different subgroups that we look at.
And ELL too.
There's no shortage.
They can cross over.
Well, you know, that's one of the hot topics that we've had, is, you know, I know that, I did look at it on this, at this M-CAS, but to look at the performance, I think next month we'll have a presentation on ELL. And maybe one of the things we could look at is performance of that subgroup.
I have a question, I mean, we don't have any, listen to M-CAS presentations, and our, you know, I think the strategy we philosophize more that we took as a district was always like, we don't teach to the test. You know, we teach for the students, and we hope that the outcome of these tests is a student assessment. And that we, you know, that is why they were created in the first place, to be able, so. Are they now giving out the questions? Still? No? Okay. I thought maybe there was enough of an upgrade about that.
They're releasing fewer and fewer over the past.
It always amazes me.
They have started releasing over the past few years, the long comps. So we are able to really critically analyze those.
Right, that is always amazing, you know, you look and say, like, forty percent of our kids did really bad on question twenty-seven. So that's really an area we need to concentrate, and then we don't.
then we don't know what question 27 is, just, just, I'm sorry, to this day, it still just amazes me that we could be giving a student assessment and not giving all the data back to the district who really wants to use that data to help the kids, just, just still fucks me.
We agree.
Exactly, we all agree. I thought maybe it was wishful thinking that there'd been enough of amazement that they started, it's great to hear they're giving you less. There you go. So, maybe the next whatever assessment is, they'll get the idea of what we really should be using this information for.
They were saying that they did release the PARC data, did they release our PARC data to us?
We didn't take part.
Oh, we took the PARP.
Two years ago.
Okay, so that wasn't the data, it was a different.
It was the last year, I forgot to choose.
It was the one that actually shows them last year. Okay, okay. I was wondering, so they haven't released any of the pilot stuff?
The pilot, this information maybe weren't going to release. It was just for calibration.
Yeah, okay.
And that was the only part of experience we got.
Right, it's just, yeah, what do you say, they released, I thought you meant the pilot information, but no. Yeah, thank you. So the next item under old businesses report on the MAS-C, MAS-S joint conference.
Right, I'm your delegate. Christine, would you like to give your perspective first?
I was actually gonna turn over to you. But I will say that, in typical fashion, the workshops were outstanding, it was, I think, more well-attended this year than perhaps in the past. I was trying to find a part that's watching, I think we're in partially, I'm trying to see, the workshops were full, standing room alone, and as usual, very informative, this is the first year I attended the mass business session, and in 35 minutes, we received really quick, but focused updates on a number of initiatives, at least 10 to 12 initiatives, that really just answered questions that we had. What are we gonna do after the vote? You know, and it was just a very pointed, purposeful dialogue to provide us with a quick update. You mentioned earlier, a lot of the conversation was about pre-K, and we had Paul Andrews, who really spends most of his time at the State House, just monitoring the bills that are going through on behalf of the Superintendents Association, and they did say that if anything comes out of this session, it will be a bill on something around pre-K. There are a number of bills in the House, I think they said something like 80 bills that are currently moving through, about one educational issue or another, several on the same topic, which is their focus area too, for school committees to try to take all of these related bills that we see, and sort of categorize them by theme, so that school committees, who, like ours, has a legislative update each month, will be able to really just focus on the issue and not the number of the bill. So that's an initiative by the Superintendents Association, which will be incredibly helpful. But they did feel that that was something that was going to come through. Just to give a quick PARC slash MCAS, MCAS 2.0 update, there are a number of questions that's surrounding the decision that really have little to do with the assessment, but everything to do with the accountability data that's reported out each and every year, because that is what we are held to by the federal government. And the accountability data basically drives us forward, and one of the focus areas of that, that data is to determine whether a district is marching towards reducing the achievement gap. And it has shifted a couple times over the last 10 years, in terms of what that sort of demarcation point would be, and when that point would be in time. They changed the year from, I think, 2015 to 2017, and here we are, not having our accountability data released yet until mid-December. And 2017 is next year. So will they release us from that federal obligation? It's not known. And so that was a bigger concern at this point. The conversations also centered around what would we like? Would we like MCAS 2.0? Would we like MCAS with PARC questions? Would we like optional PARC questions? Do we want to give districts an opportunity to then select one or the other? So it's very much cloudy, and there is a lot of indecision, even with an upcoming vote. So it will be interesting to see what comes out. We did remind folks that if we are going to administer a state assessment, they need to have clarity, and it needs to be soon, because we, at this point in time, start creating schedules for the testing, which is just in a couple months. So they need to move quickly, and they need to provide clarity, and if they are gonna modify the test, the general consensus was, go create MCAS 2.0, come back when it's complete, when it's been thoroughly vetted, when we can implement one thing, and in the meantime, let us proceed as we have been. So that was the general consensus.
So.
Not coming up.
It was MCAS 2.0 was the consensus?
No, the consensus was, if you have not created the new MCAS version, then let us stay with MCAS. And limit the options that you give a district, because that creates confusion and a lack of consensus, which really isn't good for our students or for our teachers if they're moving target. The vote is at the 17th, based on the recommendation of what? It's actually the Board of Education, which is representatives from Governor Baker's office, as well as the Education Department. And right now, it's split, because the PARC has three votes, and the Department of Ed basically has three votes, so out of that may come a compromise, and what we're basically requesting is that if there is a compromise, it's very clear. Or hold it off until it's complete. Right. That's kind of, I don't know, we went to that one session on PARC. Yeah, just on assessments and stuff.
It doesn't seem to be consensus, I think.
No, but he was sort of, the guy who was talking was sort of saying that it's a door number three, as they say.
Oh, yeah.
He said, don't use it.
Don't use that terminology.
But, you know, maybe there's a hybrid of the two, because, you know, and people kept asking him to explain, he's like, you know, he was kind of saying the MCAS has worn out, worn out its use, and it's not assessing what we need to, but maybe the PARC goes too far, so maybe there's some kind of middle ground between the two, assessing, you know, the new, what we're teaching and the new way of teaching. Yeah, I went to the DESE session, and the woman was sort of like, people keep asking, are we just not telling anybody what's going on? And I really, is it a big secret on DESE? She's like, no, well, like, nobody really knows. No, no secrets, we really don't know. So it was interesting. So, I, yeah, again, I shouldn't be surprised, but, you know, deciding in November what you're gonna evaluate on in March doesn't exactly. It was too much time to adapt and adopt and adapt. But, hey, just going along with it.
All right, so I'll give you my report as your delegate from the Delegates Assembly, and I would say that everything basically passed, if not unanimously, then, you know, just with like a handful of people voting against, except for, which resolution was it?
Five.
Resolution five, tax reform ballot question. So that was a nice heated discussion that went on for a while. But it finally failed 50 to 62, I mean, not the actual, but it failed 50 to 62, so I guess that will not be moving forward on the MAS-C document. Yes, but everything else regarding high school starting times, poverty in children, tying test scores to chapter 70 funding, support for an equitable and sustainable placement program for students covered under the McKinney-Bento Homeless Education Assistance Act, membership of a school committee member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and a relative to the teaching, relative to the teaching strategies, goal assessments for kindergarten students, basically rolling it back, all pretty much consensus.
So this is really just used to sort of give the people who run MAS-C direction as to what we want to concentrate on with the legislative session?
Yeah, a lot of it was getting a sense of the room, getting a sense of the room from their perspective, you know, like, they have probably not all 350 towns, but they have a majority of school committees sitting in that room. And so if something like resolution five was, you know, so contentious and obviously failed by, you know, a fair margin, then they have a sense of what school committees across the state are kind of thinking. But, you know, would they, I mean, I know that resolutions, you know, in the past, it takes, I mean, if you look at the chapter 70, like evaluating, reevaluating chapter 70, and it's, like, that all, it didn't all start, I'm not gonna give them total credit, but that was a discussion like four, three, four years ago, in this Delegates Assembly, and it was a hot enough topic that I think MAS-C really, you know, pushed that forward and pushed pretty hard, and they're, you know, they're getting results. So, yeah, so I think they kind of use it as a temperature, getting the temperature of, you know, to get the issues across the state. And then I also went on, went on, or went to sessions on the chapter 70 update, PARC update, early education update, a lot of updates this year. That was all incredibly informative, and, you know, I wish I had something definitive to report back to you, but, no, it's a lot of work in progress. But the good news is the whole chapter 70 reevaluation, it sounds like no, no district will be hurt, you know, like, all, any change in the chapter 70, if they reevaluate the chapter 70 funding formula to account for, better account for health insurance issues, special education issues, that everybody will, everybody will be better off, but obviously some districts will be way better off than others. At least nobody, it sounds like, gets hurt.
They made significant progress, I think they actually completed all goals. The foundation we were building, we talked about that in another times last year, and exactly that, they said the biggest advantage is that they really appreciate how underfunded special education, limited English proficiency, and some of the subgroups that we talked about with MCAS in terms of funding for chapter 70. And because they have been so underfunded or misrepresented in terms of dollars in the formula for a number of years, every district will be catching up with that to some extent. And they're going to continue the work, they finished their first phase, and I think they're moving into the second phase. And again, that was a wonderful collaboration between MAS-S and MAS-C, just in the conferences each year.
They said it didn't sound like they concentrated on circuit breaker. So circuit breaker and the circuit breaker formula was not really part of this, which is sort of, doesn't make sense to me, because circuit breaker is special education reinforcement, but, so they also did not, so they didn't look at doing any kind of adjustment to the circuit breaker formula, and so we can basically still continue to expect to pay 100% of our special education transportation costs, because nobody's looking at it as part of special education.
Maybe that'll be in phase two.
Maybe. I've, I've, it bothers my mind, but, moving on. Great conference.
Thank you. Update on the speaker series?
We had a wonderful presentation on the MAS-C. A number of Southboro school committee members, and any one or more of three sessions that we offered, with Dr. Judith Owens, who is nationally and internationally recognized for her research around the effects of sleep deprivation in adolescents. We actually held three sessions, she was in our district, and so we certainly put her to work, there was no sleep for her that afternoon. She met with our superintendent's curriculum advisory committee, and that was their first meeting of the year, and spent a lot of time in conversations with her. We then offered time for school committee members to join in, we actually were visited by the Shrewsbury Superintendent and three school committee members, who are also beginning to look at this issue, as were just about every district that I spoke with at the conference. Question could be heard by just about everyone I spoke to, what are you doing about start time? So this is something that's being, you know, considered across the state, and that was actually one of the resolutions for the state to form a special commission to evaluate this. But what was wonderful about the presentation is it really wasn't about what time are you gonna start school or not start school, it was really about the importance of sleep in all children, and it was wonderful to hear the questions that were asked by the audience, because they really were about the children, and how parents can better support the needs of the children. And it was well-attended. We do have it out on YouTube, thanks to our SAM's cable access, they did tape the entire session, and it was out as a link in the November district doings today. So the entire presentation, Dr. Owens allowed or gave us permission to tape, and it's out there for viewing. About two hours, and it was an excellent evening. It's the first in the series, the next will be on technology, it will be in March by Alan November, not November in March, but the other way around, and he'll talk to us about the impact of technology, and I'm hoping we have an equally large audience. It was held at Trotier, I think the next one is also scheduled for Elgant, and then we'll have the third at, most likely, Malcolm Mill, which will be on stress, and how to reduce stress in our parent population, and also in our children. So we're really excited about this. Also, in the district doings, there's a link where parents can go to find more information on this topic, not just about the time school starts, but the whole issue of sleep, and how they can work with their children, so it was a great success, and I think the school committee who are supporting it will bring in, it was very important, it was great.
Paige Rollins?
Paige Rollins, we're in your pocket. They seem to be, thanks to Tim's protection, kindergarten, worked 130 students in kindergarten, and we are at 1310, in our 10 to 8 grades, so it's holding steady, not sliding up.
I know that when I'm looking, you know, you can look at a number of different sources for sales of homes in the town, and they just seem, they seem to be picking up more than ever, okay? It's starting to look more like it was, you know, back before the economy took a bat 200 million years ago.
It's everybody that I know's, there are gymnasters in the field.
Children are moving in.
Exactly, totally, yeah.
So I think that it's, I think we've already seen a big jump in the kindergarten class, much more than many people expected a few years ago. I think there were people that expected the class at this time would be as small as 85 students, and it's not, it's 130. That's not a small miss. So, you know, I just think that, you know, we'll just collectively keep an eye on it. I know that we, in December, we're gonna have some numbers coming out on population, so we'll look at them again in December and go from there.
Then, of course, they'll play an important part of our conversations when we move forward with our FY16. Speaking of FY16, the budget is in your packet, and we will need a vote, there are no significant variance, and we'll need a vote to approve until audit.
Chair, I'm going to be more specific.
I motion we approve the October 31st, 2015 financial report until audit.
All in favor?
Budget priorities are in our packet, the FY17 budget priorities, I believe we voted these last month. So they are ready for us to use as a framework as we move forward again with our budget discussions that are coming up soon. I believe in December we'll be talking about some budget drivers for the budget.
Do we need a vote on this? Christine, are we ready to vote?
We did.
Okay, hello, okay.
Lots of conversation last night. And also, the FY17 budget calendar is in the packet, we did hear from the town administrator, and we are in the process of scheduling an initial meeting, Cheryl, Rebecca, myself, I believe it's gonna be next week.
You think it's next week?
Yeah, it's coming up. I know we were trying to identify a date that worked for everyone.
It's next week.
I think it is next week. So that's good news?
I'm sure we'll have a follow-up. We'll be adding to this budget council pretty quickly, adding in December, I'm sure.
Educational policy, that's none of its time. And policy development and distribution?
Right, we actually have three policies that were voted and approved by the South Fork School Committees at our combined meeting in June. We're very excited about, these are the first three policies that have actually resulted in our work as a combined group. And as always, we meet together, but we vote separately, and so these were approved by the South Fork School Committee. The first one is on the National Background Checks, which is the fingerprinting policy, which was a state mandate. And that process, the mandate included the school systems processing fingerprinting for all of our educators and employees. And we also have our ESY extended school year policy and our wellness policy, J320.
Is everyone fingerprinted, or is that still just phasing in?
We actually, you know, immensely happy. When this first came out, they jumped on board, the state, we reauthorized the fingerprinting schedule and moved the timeline up, but I believe at this point, we are almost 100% fingerprinted, which is pretty amazing. The state had given us a window initially for about three years, and then they changed it to two, and I believe the final date will be this July 30th, July 1st. But our staff got on board, and as we know, it's a process that's incurred by the staff for the process, because it is a state mandate, but we're in great shape. And every new employee that comes into the district has to be fingerprinted.
Can we do it onsite now, or do they still have to go to the...
They still have to go to an identified site by the state. And actually, the state has reduced the number of sites, the company that does...
It's like, oh, did they increase the number?
No, they decreased them. And I'm sure they'll be shutting more down as...
Oh, as in the word, yeah.
It's called amorphous trust, the fingerprinting arm of the state. And we're hoping that at some point, Massachusetts does what many other states do, which is make it a part of, you know, a driver's license, or, you know, some process that everyone goes through, but they chose to implement the schools, because they knew we had the most number of folks, and we'd get it done efficiently and correctly.
It actually makes sense that people who are working on this, I mean, it's just more, it's a great idea, now somebody's got to implement it, so.
We're happy it's almost complete, except for those that are coming into the district.
Right, that's different, yeah.
And that, is it $50 that they have to pay for...
55 if you're licensed, and 35 if you do not hold a state license. So you cannot certify a license with the board, but...
Distribution and personnel report?
Personnel report is in your packet, and we have each month. We do have a few folks who are transitioning, but our staffing is in great shape. Some wonderful people this year, no significant numbers of folks in this month's report. We did post again for the Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning position, and that posting closed today, so hopefully we'll be on this month's issue. This was our second posting.
And district doings?
No members, just this afternoon. So we should be having a one call on your phone, which will share some information about, dare I say, school closings and cancellations, tis the season, so it does link back to our back-to-school user. We also provided the information on the MCAS, the upcoming MCAS forums, the link for our speaker series, and again, just more ways to communicate with our community about things that are taking place at the district level.
So if you're just going to the district website, how do you find the speaker series?
The speaker series, there's an actual link on the side. And they can click on that, and all of the resources will be available. It's also under commended on School Committee Resources as well, so it's in two locations.
Well, I tried to get it, and the SAM site seemed to be down.
Okay.
So if you say it's on YouTube...
It's on, the link that SAM's provided, Terry probably can provide, the link that SAM's provided is out to YouTube. So that's in the one call, so you might be able to access it from there as well, give it a go.
And action on minutes?
Do we need a vote to...
Yeah, we need a motion to...
A motion and a vote?
Yeah.
It's in the packet.
And do we have a motion to approve the South Fork School Committee Agenda Minutes for November 2, I'm sorry, October 14?
Unless I lose.
Do we have a second?
Just that.
All those in train?
Cheryl has a stack.
We have approval of bills in payroll. And the agenda items for next month?
We have a few things listed, certainly we can add more, and I'm sure we will be. Excited to hear the NARES School Improvement Plan, I'm sure because one is hard at work, has not completed it already. And we will have Rhoda with us, Rhoda Webb, who is our ELL Coordinator, and she'll be giving us an update on not only access and retail, but our ELL population, which is always interesting to hear and to learn about. So she'll be with us next month. We have, I probably should have put this in italics with a question mark at the end, a decision on the vote by the State Board of Education. And Principal Lavoie will be providing us an update on Stone Environmental and the Washington trips, and will be seeking approval for next year's trips. Just as we've done in the past, it allows a greater time and flexibility to get the best plan for the students and the most preferable cost. So we'll be voting on that.
And the last item is audience sharing, and I noticed that we have no audience. Would anybody else like to share?
I'd just like to stand by, we have our soup, we had our last month, Jerry talking about the soup at NARES School.
If we all get to choose, which other school we want to return to, so we'll make sure that we do that.
We do have that week, some wonderful work being undertaken by Carolyn Diakma, our House Representative. She did reach out to us on, I think it was last Monday, she had left a message on my phone about some of the bills that were moving through the House, and coincidentally, we had just had a conversation about them the week before at the South Fork School Committee. And one of them was the ESPERT, which is the potentially, potential new unfunded mandate or semi-funded mandate from the state, which would survey our 7th graders and our 10th graders on substance abuse particularly tied to opiates. We discussed this in a couple sessions and believed that the bill needed greater clarity, and some discussions around confidentiality and implementation, and really the overall value of surveying all of our 7th and 10th graders for 10 minutes, which they also have a knocked-out provision for, when in fact, we as a district have been very much involved in a survey that's longitudinal, that's comprehensive, and whose data that we analyze and look at and use in meaningful ways to improve programs that we offer our students, which is the Metro West Health Survey. And after much conversation, we, I invited Carolyn, Representative Diakma, to visit our district and to participate in the safety network meetings that we have that are now run by Marie Allen, and congratulations, that was your first meeting, it was outstanding, it was well-attended. And hear from the folks who work with our students each and every day, and really learn the practices that we have in our district that we feel are far better opportunities to connect with students than one more survey that results in more data that may or may not be meaningful, that we may or may not have time to really take a look at or implement, or even have funds to do anything with. She stayed the entire meeting, she engaged in conversation with everyone from across the district, which is phenomenal. And we invited her, I invited her back on Monday to attend the Provider's Breakfast again, run by Marie Allen. And we had probably, rated this round, 45 to 50 healthcare providers, educators, clinicians, psychologists, Jerry Schultz, who is someone who's very much embraced our district for a number of years, was presenting on anxiety and stress. We invited him to be part of our speaker series, and he agreed. It was a phenomenal morning. And Carolyn has, Representative Diakma, has invited myself and any of our district participants, members, providers, to speak to some members of the Senate on educational issues, and particularly this issue. The thought being that we have a number of outstanding programs that would be best served being supported with the funds that they otherwise would be expending on another survey. And she is behind our thinking, and we're very excited about this, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Nice partnership.
A tremendous partnership. Genuinely interested in what's taking place in our schools, and then does something about it.
Right.
That's good.
Would it be helpful to extend an invitation to school committees for the next Provider's Breakfast?
No, that would be great.
Sure.
Sure.
The breakfast is phenomenal. Let's get us with food.
The meeting is great, too. The breakfast is awesome.
When is that, Marie? The second one is...
It'll be in March.
In March.
We haven't set the date yet, but it'll be in March before MCAS.
Okay.
That's it, meeting adjourned.
Someone's got to move it.
Can we have a motion?
You're not a dictator.
Kathleen, can we have a motion?
I hope we adjourn.
I suck it.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.